As published January 29th and February 5th. Just a administrative note, making a presentation is Berkshire Design who, because of the work I do, I have worked with them in the past and am currently working with them now. If anybody has an issue with that or thinks that will affect my judgment, please raise your hand and I can recuse myself. Carla as well at Smith College has worked with Berkshire Design in the past as well. So want to get that out there to see if anybody has an issue. If so, raise your hand. If not, we can start with Rick. Okay, we're good.
If you wouldn't mind, I wanted to just address kind of the larger mass development concept here. There's a misconception, I think, about what's required in our special permit for trails. And so the most relevant, most recent document is subdivision decision. And that references the 2002 master plan as it may be amended from time to time by the planning board and the Citizens Advisory Commission. And it's been amended numerous times, most recently in 2012. And there's also a note under there which I've highlighted that the paths have to be ADA accessible. So there's nothing in our permitting either the special permit or the subdivision approval that requires a connection through Memorial Park. And in fact, the connection through Memorial Park is infeasible because of the grade change at the back of the park. If you were to require that kind of-
Excuse me, what is Memorial Park, please?
Yes. Right there. So this is Beechtree Park, which exists, and then Memorial Park is going to go here. And the planning board members made a note, that planning office made a note, that they would like to see a connection from here to here. And it's not possible, and I don't believe it's required by any of our mass developments permits. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay.
Could you show this side where Memorial Park is as well?
So that's Beechtree Park.
Rick, maybe in your presentation, you can point that out as well, the areas that we're talking about?
That's Memorial Park.
The back end, isn't it?
So this is, okay.
Yeah, this is the property line. This is Memorial Park. This is the last house on Olander.
Got it. Thank you. Sorry. I'm Rick Klein with the Berkshire Design Group, partner of the firm. With me tonight is Carter Scott from Transformations in Pam Kimball. And tonight is a presentation for the preliminary subdivision plan submission for Village Hill for energy positive homes.
Would you mind speaking up, please?
Sure, no problem. The rendering that you have on the screen in front of you is the artist conception of what the community will look like. And I think it probably might be a good time at this point to have Carter Scott, head of Transformation, talk about the community itself, because the community itself is actually quite different than your average subdivision. And so Carter, would you like to say a couple of words?
Sure. As you can see in the early rendering, we oriented the homes to the south and added solar electric panels on the roofs. This development will likely be one of the most efficient developments in the country once built. We're trying to generate as much energy as we can use on each building. One of these buildings to the left, a salt box, has as much as 26 KW on it. So it has a hers or home energy rating system as low as minus 87. That would take over the prior record, which I believe we have at Devens, at a minus 37 project we did with Mass Development a couple of years ago. We're also considering the Living Building Challenge with pedal certification. So we're pushing envelopes where possible. This is an early design with cottages. We've been modifying it with cohousing on the right. The designs will have evolved a little bit over time. But I think we have a very, very nice, well-thought-out project and glad we're doing it tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I guess the other thing I'd like to do is just put emphasis back for people so that they realize that this is an energy positive community. These houses do not use any energy, they produce it. That's the biggest difference. Existing conditions, let me just go back for a second, we missed one. Proposed project location, as you can see, it's up at the end of Olander Drive and in the area that's lightly shaded with the orange around it, which is the remaining parcels for housing at that end of Village Hill. And this is, it shows context in some of the existing roads that already exist and how it plays out with the other roads and houses that are there. The site itself, existing conditions, the dark gray trees that you see there are the important trees that are required to be remaining. And so we highlighted all those trees. We've measured the drip lines on all those trees and the root systems on the trees as well, so we could design around them. There's the existing trail network, which was in Carolyn's memo, talking about, so we are paying attention to how the trail systems work and how to get there from here. So this is a general site design plan. The preliminary subdivision for the public road that we're seeking is on the left, the loop road. There's a spur road that goes off to the right that goes to the cohousing and up toward the top of the page, about halfway down to the cohousing for some more units there. Those are private roads. But the public road that we're seeking preliminary subdivision approval on is the one on the left, it's the loop. There's 85 units total, 32 units of cohousing, 53 units of non-cohousing. In the cohousing, the 32 units is split up into 10 duplexes and 12 single families. On the 53 units of other housing, there's four triplexes, nine duplexes, and 23 single family homes. And I guess before I even get going into the rest of the presentation, the other thing that we're doing is that this subdivision is being designed to the new North Hampton subdivision standards for low-impact development. And we're actually trying to take it one step further to be ultra-low-impact development. This is the existing trail network versus the proposed trail network, which you can kind of go to some of the things that Beth was just talking about. The existing trail network is the, I don't know how to call it, darker purple, if you will, and the brighter purple or the reddish purple is proposed. And we are retaining the north, south, and east-west trail connections that the city has asked for. I can come back to these questions and I'll just kind of go through and if you can come back. Here's how the unit types lay out. Single-family, duplex, triplex, and cohousing are segregated in different parts of the site, as you can see. Then we've also done a phasing plan, which is illustrated here. And this is how the lotting plan would work out. You can see the, we're going to be seeking approval for a public roadway on that loop. The roadway up to the upper right, that says private road with shading on it, is it will be a private road that both goes down to the cohousing, which will come back in for site plan review. But that would be a private portion of the road, mostly because of the way the subdivision regulations work, and that particular road won't have a sidewalk on both sides. And so we've elected to keep it private. Grading and drainage. I guess the first thing I would say about grading and drainage is that the site is under a stormwater permit already by the city of North Hampton. And so things that we're not applying for a new stormwater permit is part of what we're doing. That said, what I can say is that the loop road to the left, you can see the arrows of drainage, which are bio swales heading down to the center. And then it heads down, following the light brown lines that just came on, to the detention basin. That's the storm drainage system that will pick up the bio swales and take them down to the existing detention bond. The way we've done the drainage calculations on the site, many of you will remember that there used to be another detention basin required for housing up to the upper left on the site, under what says grading and drainage plan, with the low-impact development that we're doing and the way that we're doing things. Drainage calculations show that we no longer need that and we can use the existing basin. Sanitary sewer. The loop road has gravity sanitary sewer. The cohousing units that all will have injectors, individual injectors in each unit, to come up to a common force main and back out gravity the other way. As many of you know, that the area with the cohousing is at lower elevation than the higher part of the plateau. Water system we're just showing is a system that goes throughout, and it's looped on the loop road as well. And so we have an overall utilities plan. And one of the reasons we developed the overall utilities of plan at this point is with the low-impact development, trying to locate the bio swales on either side of the road, because typically you'd have a curb and a tree belt, whereas now we need rainwater collection on either side of the road and trees and utilities. So that was one of the things that we were working out as how to do it all. Going to street trees, these are the specimen trees that are required to remain, and all the calipers and tree sizes are shown to scale, all individually measured. Then there are other existing trees on the site that are also being retained. Obviously toward the top of the page, there's also a woodland back there. We're not showing the whole thing, but those are significant other trees that are not specimen trees. And then in addition to that, there's street trees. And our submission asks for, one of the waivers that we had asked for was for edible street trees. And it was our thought process that the people that are living there would have a co-op, if you will, to enter into the thoughts of permaculture on the site as well, and would have a lot of edible trees on site, which we will still have. But at this point, we're not asking that they're in the right-of-way of the road, in concert with the planning board's decision recently and comments on that. So what, just to continue on, so to have the discussion, because that's part of the preliminary plans, to have discussion. Because of the solar nature of each house, we need shorter trees. And what we were trying to do originally is have edible street trees, as shorter trees that would just dovetail with the ability to keep the roofs open to solar exposure. However, the North Hampton street tree index does have trees for use under power lines. And so what we'll be doing is using those kinds of trees instead of the edible street This is a road cross-section, and this is where I'm going to say that we're also, this was done as part of the submission, as we've now, we're going to add a sidewalk on the other side, because the other thing, as you'll notice in Carolyn's memo, for the street type that we're asking for would require sidewalks on both sides. And so what we're, what we are going to be doing, or the plan is, is have a concrete sidewalk on one side, and on the right-hand side, where now it just shows the bio swell in a tree, we propose to have a gravel sidewalk or TRG sidewalk in keeping with the LID option of the subdivision regulations. Also, I think Carolyn might have had an issue about having the, one of the utilities on the road, I can't remember which one it was, but we've already moved that under the road as well. In general, what we're trying to do is take all the comments that Carolyn had and the conversations that you've all had and incorporate everything. The same goes through for road width, where we had actually thought, as a design firm, that you could actually do more traffic calming than the original subdivision regulation revision had called for, and go down to 18 feet as you approach the intersection. We're deciding not to do that, and we're going to keep exactly with the widths that are specified in the subdivision regulations, which is a change from the submission that you've gotten. So, long story short, we're, all the waivers that we were originally asking for, we're no longer asking for.
So at the crosswalks too, that waiver?
That's correct.
You're no longer asking?
That's correct. Going to housing types. Single-family homes through here, I'm trying to figure out, Carter, maybe I'll let you, do you want to come up here and I'll just, or if you want to speak and I'll just do the slides kind of thing?
Sure. So the home on the left is a salt box home, where south is to the back, that has an 18.33 KW system and has a home energy rating system of a minus 21. The plan in the center is our first zero-energy home, it won a $15,000 utility prize. The one on the right is a Greek Revival. But basically, we're trying to get a flat roof area facing south and then super-insulating the homes. Here are the duplexes, and this is a triplex. So historic front, we also have an historic side. Here is the cohousing area, again, orienting the roofs towards the south and keeping up some historic colonial kind of cape, neck, or...
Just to keep people in the loop, the cohousing is still under design. This is where it is currently. However, it is still subject to change. As many of you know, cohousing involves a number of different owners, all of whom are involved in the design process. So it's progressing as we speak, and we will be coming in for site plan review.
Current version of the common house building. And this is a two-family in the cohousing. This at the moment is a congregate home in the cohousing. This is a duplex flats, a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom flat. This is that early rendering which we've evolved from, but we made about a year ago, early concept sketch of the whole project.
One of the bigger differences that you would see in this rendering from where this was done to where we are today, is you can see the large solar carports in the middle. We're no longer planning those. We have enough energy production on the homes that we don't need them. And this is a street rendering of, just to give you a general character of the street and so on. So that's the presentation. We can go back and talk about particulars as you like.
Questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. The, so it's 85 units?
Yes.
It's all right. Confusing to me because it seems to show a hundred. If I, general site plan, it shows on both sides, how many housing units, and it adds up to 100.
That may be, at the time of the submission, where we are today, is 85 units with the breakdown that I was mentioning before.
So should this be amended?
We can amend it if you like, although I think for the preliminary plan, it's not, may not be necessary because it's the preliminary plan.
I mean, unless I'm misreading something, you call out 23 housing, you have how many housing units on both?
I know. Let me just go back through it, and Carolyn, this is for you as much as anybody else. For the 53 units of non-cohousing, there's four triplexes, nine duplexes, and 23 single family. And so that's how we arrived at the 53 units. And then there's 32 units of cohousing.
So you reduced it from, you want to show us here?
Correct.
So I can just speak to that a little bit. So there's no maximum or half on the number of housing units, and since this is preliminary subdivision, the number still may be in flux. But I mean, there's no, when you see the final plans and the final site plan, that would be the time at which you'd want to make sure you understood what the numbers were. So we wouldn't need any amendments of this, because they're going to come back for a full definitive plus site plan.
Right, okay. And are they for sale or rent, or just, have you decided?
Most likely for for sale, there's a possibility of some of the duplexes and triplexes. And can I clarify on the number of units? Since last summer, since the land disposition agreement with Mass Development, we have been at 85 units. So if the plans say otherwise, it's just a labeling error, and how they're depicted in terms of triplexes, duplexes, and singles add up to 85 units.
And, sorry.
My last question, just curious, TRG sidewalks, how do you shovel them?
TRG can be plowed. Many people have TRG driveways and they get plowed, and what ends up happening with TRG is that every few years, you'll have to go back and play with it and level it out and add a little bit more TRG. But that's the requirement in the low-impact development, so that's fine.
So they percolate, is that the answer?
If you were to talk to Doug McDonald at DPW, he'd say that the infiltration rate on DPW is really not much, or TRG is not much less than asphalt. However, it is more permeable than asphalt. So, I guess the other thing I should probably point out is that the main loop road is being done as a residential yield street, so it can become a public way. And then you can see the little alleys that come through there, there's three of them. Those are done as private alleys in conformance with the subdivision regulations. And the private roads that are off to the right are done in conformance with the private road as well.
Question is, the only thing we're talking about tonight basically is the loop road, so there were staff comments on the cohousing area. Are those up for discussion tonight, or is it just, should we, the focus just be on the loop?
Well, the focus is on the loop, but I think the, because, so technically, this is preliminary subdivision, so it's just about the loop road. But they've given the plans, and so if there are comments or concerns, I mean, I sent you the staff report with comments, I don't think it hurts to get it on the table now. So as they're redesigning this stuff, there can be conversations back and forth about how to address those. So I think, my recommendation would be to talk about it all, but, you know, specifically, you want to make sure, you know, any technical standards about the road also, you know, get addressed.
And we're happy to talk about it all as well.
Okay, so do you want to just go through each one of those? So I think these are all in the, well, maybe not all, but most of them are on the cohousing. Number one, driveways need to be offset from intersecting streets by at least 50 feet.
There's some of those outside of the cohousing, actually down here, on the, right near the intersection of Ford and Olander Loop, there were a couple driveways that were closer than this.
We'll look to address that.
Next up, the PV carport in the cohousing area is blocking the emergency 12-foot wide drive.
That's actually not on the plan anymore. The plans that you have screened tonight, no longer.
Okay.
What we've done is we've done a major shift from the plan that you had submitted to these plans, where we used to have the carports and collective parking in the middle. We no longer have that with the units, that each unit has a sufficient number of parking spaces on its own.
So the plans we have are the preliminary plans to the preliminary?
That's correct. Keep evolving as we speak.
Oh wait, can I clarify, so, but even on the screen, you're showing carports, or you're saying in the cohousing, there'll still be carports?
The cohousing is still up for grabs, but in the main part of the housing off to the left-hand side, where there used to be carports, there are no longer.
I think that comment was related to the cohousing section.
Oh, I see, this is specific to the cohousing section.
Yeah, the PV carport in the cohousing area is blocking the emergency 12-foot wide drive.
From the southern part, and that will need to be revised.
Yeah, we'll revise that.
The through path behind the PV carport on the north side doesn't appear to be wide enough. The dimensions need to be clarified for this internal network connection.
That will-
That might be in the, the one that's been discontinued now.
Right.
And the last one, the internal path that crosses the cohousing driveway should be clearly designed with material changes and elevation changes to force cars to stop, slow down at the crossing.
The only thing that I would say about that is that the road that goes down from the loop down to cohousing is going to be a relatively steeper road. We're studying the elevational change. We don't have an issue with having significant knowledge of drivers to figure out that there's a crosswalk there. We're trying to find the best way to do it. And it may or may not be the elevational change, and so if we can reserve judgment on that one.
So, but you know it's an issue.
Yes, we know it's an issue.
Can you go back to the grading? Do we have a grading plan? And just walk us through the paths and why they can or cannot be connected?
Would you want to use a trail?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I just want to clarify too, that there's not, none of my comments to you all or Berkshire Design said that there had to be a path through the Memorial Park lot, which, just to clarify, is right here. My biggest concern was sort of going back to the concept that you got, that there's a north, east, north, south, and east-west connection, and this has already been built up to this point. So somehow this needs to get over to here and come down.
The reason-
In a direct manner.
The reason we're not showing it as in a direct manner is it can't be done in an ADA-compliant manner. It'll be all stairs the entire way, because of the slope right there is really quite steep. I mean, it's flat at the, over next to Olander, but it drops off in a hurry. And we're not able to actually get an ADA-compliant pathway there. So our solution was to head up the continuation of Olander there, then cross down the roadway, which has got the ADA waiver because it's adjacent to a roadway, and then come back the other trail.
Do you have a pointer? Can you walk us through?
The, right there is where we're talking about. It is flat right about through here, but from here down, it's quite steep. And if I had to guess on the gradient right through there, it's probably between 15 and 20 percent, well over ADA. And to try to figure out how to get ADA, the numbers of switchbacks that we looked at were significant. And I don't think that's what people are really intending.
Even if we went through a portion of the Memorial Park?
Yes, even if we went through a portion of the Memorial Park, what I can do is, I'm happy to have some sketches and show you what we're up against. But that's why we went to the plan that's on the screen.
Does the grading, if you went, so we're trying to get from here over to here?
Right.
Can you come down the park this way and then cut over, or does grading-
Over by Jonathan's house, or that house, for people that don't know Jonathan, it's even steeper, is the harder part.
And that's the Memorial, that's where the fountain goes, right? That's, you were talking about-
Yeah, the fountain's actually going to go right about there. So the other, we're actually having an issue with, as long as we're talking about grades, you can see the contours that cut through here. That piece also is problematic for us trying to get that to work in an ADA-compliant manner. So we're still working on that also.
The north-south connection isn't an issue, it's just east-west.
Well, there is a, I need my point. There is, I mean, the other north piece, there's probably pieces that the applicant's going to be responsible for doing that might not make the whole connection, but, you know, there was, there's this piece that's been done to here, and this property's not part of there. So this north piece that goes up to the Mill River Trail needs to be addressed too, in that portion of the property.
Our thought on that is that it's quite a nice existing trail, as it is, and I'm not sure that anything we do to it's going to make it any different. It's still going to be a gravel or stone dust path. And also, it's not ADA compliant, so the minute we touch it, we have to start making things ADA compliant. So our thought was to just leave it alone, because it's a well-used path and it seems to be functioning quite well.
Is that the wider path? I mean-
Yes.
Well, it gets narrow.
It used to be almost like a service, right?
It gets narrower further up, which is still on the property. But we're talking eight or 8.2 percent, right? Not 5 percent.
Well, technically-
A perfectly used path.
Yeah.
I think there's a different standard, not-
There is, but we're not even going to make that. And as far as I know, the Transformations application is for the paths that are shown on here only, and not the revitalization of existing paths like the one along the river and so on.
Clarification on the north-south connection you were talking about, it's off this current site, it's to the left. So it comes through the parcel that was going to be the Montessori School, and it goes off to the left.
Right, but then is, there's a, since your property, it's shown on the plan you submitted, wraps over here, I think, you know, the connection would go up on the property there. Because along that, there's that historic path, they- Because along that, there's that historic path there, that's, this is still part of your property, correct?
Let me see if I can go back to that. Nope, that's not even on here. You can see it in this, let me see the pointer. The existing path is right here.
Yeah.
Compared to, the work we're proposing is here.
But is that the property line, the orange?
That's a combination of the zoning line. No, it's not the entire parcel line.
Okay.
But it's the, the zone line is through there.
Yeah. So the recommendation from staff to the board for consideration, and there may be some issues about gray, but I think the conversation has to continue in that the whole idea was connectivity to the outside world too. And so the north-south connector, it may stub out and not do anything for a long time, but the idea was to create those connections to the edges.
Well, I think maybe what we could do is if it ever stops snowing, we can photograph some of that also, prior to definitives coming in. So, you know, as we sit here, I can say, you know, here's station three or four, and here's what it looks like, and it's, you know, eleven and a half feet wide, because it actually is quite wide in a number of places. And so then just talk about that.
I walked all of that when we did the CPC fountain story, and it is steep, because the big tree that you're keeping, you're looking, you're looking off the fountain level into the center part of the tree.
Oh, this piece over here.
Yeah.
But I wonder, have you, did you discuss or switchbacks? Could you, could you, could you?
The number, we did a couple of quick sketches, and the numbers of switchbacks that are required is really significant. So that's why we kind of, at that point, stopped and said, let's try a different solution.
Um, I don't know, I don't think you have any views, but how visible will this be as you go east? I mean, like, if you're on the soccer field at Smith, will you look up, will it be, what is the elevation like? I know it's tree, it's wooded now, but I don't know what that view will.
Coincidentally, I happen to be planning that section of athletic field. Right now. And right here is a significant stand of pines.
Right.
And so when you're down here, you really can't see much, because these pines go up steeply enough that, A, they cut off the angle of incidence for the view, but B, they're also, because they're layered like that going up, all you see is pines.
Yeah, okay. Would you see it from, I guess, all the way across over on, at the end of Green Street? If you were standing there looking?
I don't think so. You might, no one has any plans to do anything with that pine stand.
Okay.
And so I don't think they're going anywhere. And is there a chance you could maybe see something through tops of pines? Maybe, but I think that that's as effective as an evergreen screen as anyone could ever plant.
Well, I think the question goes the other way, is what can the houses see of the lights on the field? I'm pretty sure that what you're doing there now is, is night sky, you know, zero lot line.
Correct.
Why does it look like a gravel pit kind of? I mean, is, did you just color it that way?
Oh, on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, we toned it down so it would be able to be differentiated from the rest of the, that's not.
That's not what it looks like, I see.
No. Although, there's not really much topsoil there, so it doesn't really look like the rest of Smith's athletic fields, for instance, but it's not that color. This is just a graphic to help you identify location.
Any other questions?
So, your original eighteen-foot-wide street, can you tell me what changed your mind on that, a little more about it?
Miss Mish helped.
Okay. Well, Carolyn, do we have a turning radii on our street?
Yeah. Let me elaborate.
Okay.
So these are brand-new subdivision regulations. We really went from, you know, we've been ratcheting down from big to smaller, to smaller, to smaller. And so for a public street, you know, we felt we had sort of worked in good faith with DPW to say, we want these narrowed at the intersection, because that's where we want, that's where the pedestrian crossing is going to happen. And they were okay with that. So I feel like pushing it one step further, getting rid of the raised crosswalks and then going narrower, is sort of a step back. And for a public street, if we're asking the city to accept it, that means they have to plow it. A little bit more room is probably better for snow, you know, as your, for snow plowing and just getting through there. It is much narrower than what we have currently. So I guess the, I would be reticent to, you know, recommend going against the standards that you all just adopted, that we worked pretty closely with DPW to finalize.
My reaction to, I know these are preliminary designs, but you've got big, wide turning radiuses, and the whole idea of the street calming and, you know, and people walking and all of that was to try to slow down traffic. And so one of the things that it looks like to me there is, if you don't throat it down, which is maybe what you were thinking about doing, but if you would think about sharpening the, the intersection angle so, as a way to slow down the traffic. And I don't know if, I'm not remembering whether we put a turning radii in the.
The standard is usually there, or by default, it's DOT, you know, or standards.
I think that we can.
It's only a comment, if there's no.
I think what will happen is we'll look at it.
Okay.
One of the things we'll come up against is the fire chief and turning radii that he needs for his trucks.
Right.
Things like that. But we'll certainly look at that as an issue.
Okay.
And I will say, you know, I don't, I, just at the beginning of the meeting, I sent the DPW comments, I don't know if you got them earlier in the afternoon, from DPW. So we did get them this afternoon.
Do you want to go through them?
I think we'll probably have to, because, you know, because I haven't even read all of them.
Oh.
But, you know, I think maybe we'll take board's comments. And then as, I'll try to get through some of them to see which ones are really sort of critical in terms of redesign, and ones that maybe are details that can be worked out as you, you know, complete your engineering and design work.
The other thing that we'll do is obviously, we'll take the comments from DPW, go back and meet with DPW and talk about them, and find out their concerns and where they need things amended, and do that. So that's part of what we would normally do anyway.
Any other questions from the board? Alan?
The applicant, I assume is a private real estate developer.
Yes, I have a deposit of homes as an LLC, which I own personally.
What's the timing on this?
Pardon?
First phase infrastructure, hopefully next summer. Once we complete the first phase infrastructure, probably starting in on the cohousing. After a certain number of units are sold, we'll start the second phase on the left. And again, after more homes are sold, we'll start the last phase.
Actually, to speak to phasing slightly, one of the, you'll notice that there's alleys that cut through in between houses that serve garages and so on. Those alleys can also actually serve as temporary emergency access to close the loop, if you will, for the phasing.
A question came up regarding fruit trees. And I don't know if you've seen the comments from staff or earlier comments from planning board at DPW, but consensus was pretty much, although well-intended, it doesn't sound like it's a practical solution, and that it should not be pursued.
Despite the hungry homeowners that will result, who will abide by that.
Can I add a comment to that, though? I mean, we were writing those for any, any.
I know, we understand.
And so I, if, if you thought, I mean, you can go back and see our concerns there were, you know, and I'm not changing our vote, we voted, but I'm just.
Right.
In light of this project, I think that if you had a way, we were worried that they would become a problem.
Right.
And, and they easily can, we all kind of know that, but.
We actually understand completely how our, the design plan for this particular community is adventurous, that not all others that come after it will be. And while this will have homeowners associations that are actually really interested in permaculture and edible trees and things like that, others may not. And so we fully understand your decision. And we're still going to have permaculture and edible, edible trees, they just won't be in the right-of-way.
This might be the thing, kind of thing, we're in the cohousing part, which is a private road, have at it.
Okay.
But on the public side, where.
I think that was it, is there may be an opportunity to manage what we know is the problem.
Right.
And I would think, you know, really, as you recognize, we were, we were trying to be conservative for any kind of project. This is an unusual approach to it.
Right.
I mean, I don't, will they have?
It's still going to be a public, there's a portion that will still be a public right-of-way. And I think from that perspective, that's no different from any other subdivision, you know, approval. But there are also several private alleys and private driveways, which I think, you know, is a different scenario.
All for that.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. That's, it's well-understood. And we actually feel that we can still have the permaculture edible program that we want without having the trees necessarily in the right-of-way.
Anybody else before we open up to public comment? No, okay, thanks, sir. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to voice a comment? Okay. Yeah, if you, if you do, if you could raise your hand, I'll call on you, come up to the podium, and name an address, and then we'll hear what you have to say.
Where's the pointer? I'll show you my house. I guess the concern I have, and I'm, we're here since last March, so I don't know, does this happen? I don't want to touch that.
Can we get your name, sir?
Darryl McKenny, sixteen Ford Crossing, corner house down there in white, right across from the, the loop.
There?
Yeah.
No, the other side, other end. I, the snow is obviously a little out of whack this year. The street cleaning's been reliable, but with the other density of this and the number of cars coming in, I only hope that those taxes will go toward more equipment to better clean the streets. We're about a lane and a half on Ford Crossing right now. And I know that's in a lot of the city, though. But, so, that's, that goes into the concept here. I'm not, not against the houses, you know, but I think that's a major concern that we have up there. I do.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Andrew Crystal, fifty-one, Olander Drive. I have a memo from Jonathan and Meg Wright, who weren't able to make the hearing, and they asked me to read it into the record. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I wish we could be on hand in person. We understand that the proposed loop road of Olander Extension is to be a public street and meet those standards for sidewalks, lighting, and infrastructure. Given the prevailing non-summer winds that place the currently-built residences at Village Hill downwind of this new work, we would like the permits to specifically reflect intensive dust mitigation efforts, including wetting and chloride procedures for the public and private roads. In addition, all soil stockpiles should be covered and balasted when not immediately used for cut and fill. During early road construction, some areas were severely impacted, and the likely construction timeframe for the current project may be five years or more. The area east of Olander Drive is currently home to many mature trees, and it is not clear from the plans that many of these survive, including some of the Copper Beach and other designated trees adjacent to Olander Drive. The tree inventory from Beals and Thomas should be reviewed in the context of this plan. The cohousing plan shows a shop and chicken house. Is this still true? I'll keep reading. We request that the shop be placed north and east in the complex away from the Memorial Park and other existing homes. The chicken house is at the south end of the cohousing complex. This places the odors upwind of the residences and also places it next to the open common lane. For these reasons, we think it should be relocated to the north and east away from the primary drainage swell, which it could pollute and preserve the open meadow views less disturbed. Throughout the development of Village Hill, strict adherence to the architectural guidelines prepared by CBT some years ago has been required, and we have been assured that these requirements will continue. Please find an appropriate way to mandate design conformance with the standards in the site plan permit. Thank you for your consideration. That's from Jonathan and Meg Wright. I have a question slash concern I'd like to raise about the loop road. When Village Hill was master planned, Village Hill Road was clearly designated as a primary order. It's the only street of that width, and it's the only street that's got a yellow dividing line. The preliminary plan as shown puts probably two-thirds of the homes more accessible to Olander Drive. And it would be nice if the developer could find a way to lay this out that would encourage most of the traffic to go up Village Hill as it was always intended, take a right on Ford Crossing and enter the development. The concern is the way this is laid out, Olander, which is a side street, is going to become primary thoroughfare for certainly all the cohousing people and half of the other homes on the development. Thank you.
Thanks. Other questions from?
Is there a chicken house? I missed that.
It's not part of the. It's part of the cohousing.
Is it on the site plan?
It's on the lower.
Bottom right, there's a workshop building and a garden area shed and chicken coop.
Yeah.
Chicken co.
Yeah.
Related to that sort of location of those, some of the structures, some of the other structures in addition to that encroach on the sort of, I think, preliminary layout of the detention and drainage swell lot that I don't think has been formally created. But the detention area, which serves the entire most, more sites than just this site, and will be managed and under the care of the homeowners association, and therefore require access, needs to be on its own distinct lot. So that line needs to be carefully evaluated. So there's some structures along the eastern border there, it's that funky sort of, there's a long arm that goes north, and then a square around the pond, and then there's this link coming down. So I think it's important that you all locate the structures outside of the area that's going to be maintained, and then draw the line accordingly, so that it's on its own lot, because that is a part of the whole association, not just the cohousing site.
One thing that this plan shows is the, kind of the reconfiguration of that lot around the pond itself, the detention basin itself. You can see where we've shown it as this, the rounded part in white is actually the detention basin. And what we would like to actually suggest to the city and talk to the city about is redoing that lot, because the square is not, I don't know, the rationale, it's way more space than is necessary for the detention basin. And it's our hope to actually redefine that square, if you will, to be a little bit closer to the edge of the detention basin, a far enough way to give access and things that are necessary, but hopefully to reconfigure it slightly to allow the density of housing units. The, going to the south, that linear pathway that you see is the existing easement or lot line, if you will. And same with the one going to the north down to the Mill River, is the same. The only thing that we've taken liberty with, if you will, is the area directly around the detention pond itself.
So we have, what kind of regulations do we have about chickens?
Six.
You know the chicken.
Yeah, I know.
Well, smell is an issue.
I know, I can. Do we have a number?
We wrote six into the statute.
Right.
But so my question.
Per unit.
Yeah, per unit. So that's my question here. When we were doing that, we weren't thinking about fifty units. I mean, that's, that's a Delaware chicken farm.
Well, but, I mean, you did have a conversation about if you wanted to go in with your neighbors and sort of join forces so you could have more.
I had seven at the time, Carolyn, I had to have that conversation.
And, you know, I think, but I think the location issue is a good, good point, you know, if, to the extent that, you know, there may be. to the extent that, you know, there may be more than six chickens on the site, there are more than, there's more than one unit there. I think that, I think it becomes a location issue. It may be relatively invisible if it's not, you know, it's on the other side.
And if the cohousing itself is downwind from it, I mean, there's an incentive to take care of, I mean, it can be managed, but I just, this, this has me scratching my head.
Well, I don't think it's our intent, if there's, even if you just take the cohousing into account, nobody else is interested, the cohousing is, there's 32 cohousing units at six chickens per. I don't think it's anyone's intention to have 180 chickens.
Right.
Before we close, public comment, do you want to go over the DPW?
Yeah. And I don't need to, I mean, it's a five-page memo, but a lot of it is sort of detailed stuff that really doesn't need to go into any kind of conditions, but it's about formatting and what's required for the final submission. There was actually a concern, and we're talking about chickens, that the, a concern about the location of the coop next to that drainage swale or overlapping it shows less than 10 feet from the drainage channel. Will the chickens be contained within fencing to prevent impacts to the channel? And please indicate proposed garden area on this sheet. So that was just relative to that. But I will, the other issue, I will say, DPW in terms of the waivers, I think most, from what I heard, most of the waiver requests have been dropped. DPW did say they didn't necessarily object to eliminating the raised crosswalks, but they sort of left that open-ended. But they didn't say anything about, but they did object to the reduction of width from 20 to 18 feet. And they objected to utilizing edible fruit and nut trees in the tree belt for the public So, I'm just going to skip some of this stuff. I'm sorry. So a lot of details about the location of the infrastructure. Okay, so there's concern about no details about proposed sewer, about material type. Again, that's sort of more of a definitive subdivision requirement. Private force main and any associated force main services shall not-
Correct.
... right-of-way for Olander Drive. A manhole for the transition to gravity sewer shall be placed just outside of the right-of-way, excuse me, downstream endpoints of each private force main. This is all under utility plans. And other recommendations about where to locate electric utilities and water shut-off They were concerned about the location, which I think was addressed in your layout of the street trees being in the center of the swale, central line of the swale. So they're concerned about how the rain gardens and drainage swales will function if that's the case. So just take a look at that, essentially the type of trees and where they're located in the swale. And the whole coordination of how much flow is going into the existing detention pond when you come in for your drainage design, and how that relates to the pond that was already designed, you know, how, what's the capacity. And then, you know, that's all part of the stormwater analysis when you come in for your definitive. So actually, I thought there were a few more, but I think it was really mostly about the waivers and then a lot of details about things that should be included. I did forward those on to you this evening, so that should be pretty straightforward.
So administratively tonight, are we making recommendations with conditions, or is this just an informal review, almost like a technical review?
It's more than a technical review. It should be, you know, an up or down vote in terms of your voting on the concept, but things that you want to see are conditional approvals. So I think the important things would be comments about the waivers. I think you've talked a little bit about, and I guess some of the, most of those are off the table anyway at this point. And then any other issues that came up in public comment, and then also, I think from our perspective, you know, the continuity of the trail network, I think is something that really needs to be looked at in more detail. And not necessarily, my recommendation would be not necessarily to approve the way the alignment is on the, on the site, but put that out there as, you know, you're conditionally approving the street layout, but X, Y, and Z needs to be addressed during the definitive. But it is an official approval or denial. I mean, our recommendation is approval, of course, but-
So they're not really conditions, they're just points of interest that we will be looking for when it comes back through in a formal sense?
Right. Essentially, you're not saying we're approving exactly as is, but conceptually, it's the right direction.
There was, there were issues. There was a question raised about how the traffic was coming out on which street. Did the staff or the DPW or anybody have any concerns about this question of whether there was going to be too much traffic coming down Olander versus the other street as was raised?
There was, there were no comments from DPW or concern about traffic volumes. I didn't see that in my quick view from DPW. It certainly wasn't an issue that, at the Office of Planning and Sustainability level, we were concerned about. I think the idea that there is a Loop Road, I mean, clearly, there's a direct straight-line shot from Olander. I think the whole idea of slowing traffic at each of those intersecting points, you know, particularly if you have a raised crosswalk at those intersections, I think it may serve to sort of equalize the distribution of traffic, because one way's not necessarily going to be faster than the other. And there certainly isn't as much density as could be developed on that north side.
Do you have a question?
I would just add that we didn't have the benefit of a diagram, a map, but we talked this, just this week in the Bicycle Pedestrian Subcommittee about what we all have assumed is going to be an east-west, north-south connection there. So just for the record, it was discussed.
Okay. Alan?
Hi. Don't understand the parking or the access issues. How many parking spaces per unit are there?
Of the, well, just referring to cohousing? Doesn't look like there's much.
It was either 1.5 or 1.75. They were working with both numbers.
It doesn't, I just quickly counted them. I may be off, but I only counted about 25 parking places. Maybe I'm missing some.
I think there's-
What's the requirement?
Two things. I think there's a lot more than that, but also, the cohousing area is still in design flux, and we will be coming in for second review for that, and so that we will be sure to look at the parking, make sure that it's adequate.
There is, you do have the parking way up at the north end, but that's quite distant from the bulk of the housing, I would think. I mean, and the other, I guess the other sort of related question, I guess the narrow, there appear to be walkways going directly to the, to the housing units?
Yes.
So that's, I mean, that's like a couple hundred feet away from the parking, or in the case of the parking way up at the north end, it could be 300 or 400 feet, which I guess that's okay if people want to walk that far, but strikes me as a long ways.
It's been the subject of a number of discussions in the cohousing group, and as you may know, cohousing is a group consensus design process. And so anything that we come up with, all of the eventual owners there will all be in agreement with. And, you know, as a company that's designed a number of other cohousing units, communities even in Northampton, sometimes the parking is purposely away from the units by decision of the group.
Just for clarification, Rick, this is open parking here, and this is covered parking?
That's correct.
Carports?
That's correct. There's three actual, three carport sections there.
So I think there's-
Yeah, which is, it may add up to parking way up at the north. Is there a requirement to satisfy parking, that it be within a certain distance of the housing? I mean, could it be across town?
Well, in the Plan Village, well, in most districts, no, couldn't be across town. I wouldn't classify that as across town. But in most districts, there's a parking requirement. In Plan Village, we eliminated the parking requirements, but actually put a cap, so you couldn't have more than two spaces per unit. So the idea is have the applicant come forward with what makes sense from a market perspective and what the needs are, but no more than two per unit.
If I could explain the parking, the current thinking behind the parking, if you will, and why it's arranged the way it is. If you'll notice, some of the houses are very close to the parking, and there's a number of future residents of the cohousing community that want to be very close to the parking for various reasons. And then there are others in the cohousing community that do not want to be close to the parking, and they want to have a greener surrounding, if you will, and not necessarily be near the cars, and they don't feel that they want or need to be near the cars. And so those are some of the people that will be living in the units that are further away. So in the parking layout that we do have, we've actually accommodated both groups within the cohousing group itself.
It appears very intentional.
Helen, what is the requirement per unit?
There is no minimum, there's a maximum.
So there's no minimum?
Say, Carol?
It just, it appears a very intentional parking design to keep vehicles kind of out of the-
Set of the place.
Right, right.
I'm excited to see our new rules put into effect. I'm glad you're doing them. I, I think it'll be great to see what this actually, you know, we think, we envision what's going to happen, and yet, I'm curious to your experience in trying to make it happen, what you think about the constraints we'd put on the, or sometimes lack of on the, on the, I mean, these are, I think these are some of the most progressive subdivision rules in the state, and so I'm really curious to see how it happens.
In, if I could just respond to that briefly. In general, I think for the average subdivision that might come before you, I think it's hard and it's great. I think for a client-like transformations that really wants to push the green envelope, I think it could be more so, and I'm wondering whether, in the future, as the next iteration of subdivision regulations rolls out, that some of the things might get tightened down, specifically at intersections and things like that. So, but, you know, I agree with you, it's a huge step in the right direction. So we're all for it, which is why we backed off the waivers as quickly as we did.
Any other comments or questions by the board? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I could suggest the planning board perhaps request the developer to do tripe distribution within Village Hill so that the staff who didn't look at this issue would have some relevant information to make decisions, because if it turns out that the traffic is not directed the way it's intended in the master plan, the mitigation might have significant impact on their subdivision layout. It seems like staff should review that before they go too much further with their design.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
At the risk of ruining a friendship, what we are doing is following the 2011 master plan that was approved. If you look back at that plan and this one, that plan then governed that the intersections on Moser Street, and all we're, all we're doing is kind of mimicking the road layout that was there.
That plan comes up when it's needed and goes away when it's not. That's my feeling about it.
Okay. That's fair, too.
Okay, public comment's still open. Anybody want to make a motion? Yep, hold on.
My name is Jan Ruby Crystal, and I live at 51 Olander Drive. And I'm listening to this wonderful plan for the interior, all these great things that are going to be done. But I'm concerned about the impact on the existing homes and families who live and have, you know, made this Village Hill their home, spending a huge amount of money to come and live there. And now suddenly, things are really changing that were not in the original plan that we signed off on. And one of those has already been brought up, and I'm going to bring it up again, because I don't really know if you heard. Village Hill Road was the designated road that you enter into the development. The other roads are offshoots off of that road. It should be the road that we enter into this new development as well. And to suddenly take a road like Orlando, Orlando Drive that has a curve in it, that has cutouts for parking, I'm not sure that that road is set up to be used in a new way. And I think it's very important that that's studied before you approve a plan that could affect other people who are already living there, who have already invested in their life savings in this location. So I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
To illustrate Jan's point, Village Hill Road on this plan is right here, and this is the parcel that is still owned by Mass Development. And the road system would come up through here on a parcel that my client actually doesn't own at this point. So we're not necessarily against the conversation. At the same time, my client's hands are tied, because we only have two places to tie into.
And this is a question from Master Development, from a master plan. What is the plan for that chunk of real estate?
Well, it was in flux. I mean, it was cohousing at one point, and-
And the school was going to go there, wasn't it?
Well, that wasn't part of the master plan, but, you know, it was sort of an area of unknown and potentially other housing. I think one of the issues was, there wasn't a whole lot of evaluation of topography there, and so once you look at that, it's, it became pretty clear that it wouldn't make sense to bring a road all the way around there, because you only really get developed, you can only develop essentially one side of the infrastructure, because the topo is, drops off on the other side. At the same time, this isn't, the village, state, the village at State Hospital wasn't envisioned as sort of the 50s, 60s, and 70s concept of having collector streets with, you know, the, a main corridor, if you will, and you have these feeder streets coming into it. This was meant, this was intended to be a fully networked, you know, grid of streets. So the idea that you would just have one main road as the collector road and have local streets feed into it wasn't necessarily the vision anyway when it was adopted. It does happen that, because of the topography, it pushes more of that street network on the others, you know, to the northeast a little bit more than maybe was originally thought. And I think the other piece of it is having all the curves and the parking will act to, not, will, will tend not to be seen as a cut-through, and people will just sort of find their way as they, as they feel works the best.
So we would want the road intersections to line up. I mean, that's how you build a network grid. But was there any conversation about not lining it up there? I mean, I can't imagine that there would have been, but I just, it's a good-
On Olander?
Yeah.
In every master plan, 2008, 2011, 2012, there's always been this concept of a Loop Road that lines up. And as Carolyn mentioned, you can't move that loop over, because there's a steep drop off on the parcel that is yet to be sold. So, and we did have our engineers look at it, and it doesn't work, because there's a very steep drop off.
Okay. Anybody else? Motion about public comment? Second, John? Any discussion? Fall favor? Okay, public comment is now closed. Discussion. I think, I haven't heard anybody say anything really negative. I mean, I think, I haven't heard anybody say anything really negative about the plan as a whole. It's all just been kind of tweak, tweaking comments, the main waivers. The only things we had to talk about, they were taken off the board before the presentation even started. And I think some of the, the points brought up in public comment were valid. And about the, the locations of the chicken coop and the, and the shop and so forth, the connectivity of the paths, I think, needs to be reviewed further and demonstrated that, why or why not, why they can't do it in the manner that the, the board was looking for.
Request for dust control was during construction.
Right.
I assumed so.
And because it could be, right, and I think the comment was, it could be, this could go on for five years. And so they just don't want to have a giant, finish phase one and end with a giant mound of earth that for two years is just blowing, you know, dust everywhere.
This is, this is a curiosity question. So we, we vote on this tonight, and then what happened? Take me forward. So site plan for cohousing?
Well, subdivision first, because the way to get to the cohousing would be along the new infrastructure. They'd also have to develop a definitive subdivision and get that approved either simultaneously with the site plan for the other pieces. And then, as they noted, there'd be a phase build out. So you'd be approving the site plan essentially in phases, the way they come to you, probably a definitive subdivision. I assume they'll be coming all at the same time, definitive subdivision and site plan approval. And then road infrastructure would be under construction first. In order to access that, you have the water and sewer connections, and those kinds of things have to be put in place before you can start building out the cohousing. So, and then the other units, however the phasing works out. So yes, there would, you know, could be, will be a multi-year build out.
I guess what I'm trying to get in my head is how different can the next version be and still be okay? In other words, I, I haven't been through one of these preliminaries before.
Right. Well, in terms of, you're not really voting on the cohousing, so that could change significantly, because this is not a site plan in front of you. It's sort of there to show you context more, and obviously to get good valuable feedback when they do final design. So really, what you're saying, what you're voting on tonight is preliminary subdivision approval. So it's the layout of the street. So if, for instance, you think the loop road doesn't work, you want a dead-end street, then you would vote no on this, come back and show us a hammerhead intersection or something. So what you're voting on, though, is, so short of that, you'd be approving the loop in its general alignment, but obviously subject to looking at the final engineered plans to make sure they comply every step of the way with the subdivision regulations.
So this is sort of agreeing to the structure of the place?
Exactly.
And what I'm after is how dense could it get? And, I mean, it could go all to minimum lot size and...
Yeah.
Still be fine?
Yeah. There could be more units, and you're not, you're not approving the number of units now. But it's all there for context.
So cohousing, is the cohousing going to have lots?
No, it's going to be on a common.
That's where I'm going.
Parcel.
Why, I'm confused by your saying we're, cohousing isn't before us. Their, their cover letter that says their planning board, that sort of, sort of, is a proposal for 85 units, which includes cohousing.
Right.
And it's shown on the plan.
I'm, what I'm suggesting is you're not, your, your vote tonight is not voting about the layout and the details of the cohousing. Your, your approval is based on preliminary subdivision, which is the infrastructure itself, so it's just the loop road. But what they've shown you is why they need the loop road in this alignment and how it's going to connect to the pieces that they're envisioning that are going to be developed. So that's just there for context to say, this is why we're putting the loop road here. This is why we're having a private road coming over here, because it's going to service all these units. And this is why we want it to be a public street, because it's going to have this many units. So, but the, because it's a preliminary subdivision, your vote is really just about the subdivision road.
It should be noted, this is, this is the only road up at Village Hill that's being constructed by the applicant. Every other road up there was by Mass Development beforehand.
Right.
And so when it came in front of the planning board, the road and the, the structure was there, utilities were all there, and then lots were being sold off and built upon. Here, the applicant has to build the, the road and everything that comes with it.
So theoretically, do I hear you saying we could approve and, and the preliminary and the, then the final for the private housing and the, the loop road? And then when they come in for the cohousing, we could say, no, that's too many units for this road? I mean, is that correct? Doc?
Well, yes, I mean, I suppose in theory you could say this road isn't going to support this many, this number of units, although I don't think that would ever happen with the number of units they're proposing.
We recognize that we ran the risk, I know I can't.
Yeah.
Of giving you too much information.
Yeah.
But we'd rather have you see everything and be able to comment on it than just only show you will approve.
So I think the point is there, it's private roads on that side of, of the development.
Right, and you'll see, so when they come in for subdivision, definitive subdivision, they're also going to come in for site plan, I think.
Simultaneously.
Simultaneously. So at that time, you'll be taking two votes essentially. You'll be voting on the subdivision, and you'll be voting on the site plan, showing the layout of all the other stuff that's not part of the road. The house locations, the driveways, the private roads, the cohousing, where the chicken coop goes, where the, you know, where the trails are, and, and all the landscaping and the lighting for everything that's outside of the road network.
But still, the context, as you say, is, is that there's 85 units being proposed, all serviced by this road that we're going to approve or not approve?
Right.
Carla?
Yes, in regards to the public comment about dust control, you know, when they come for us with the site plan, I mean, it doesn't seem like construction activity would be under our purview as far as a condition.
Yeah, I mean, it does come up occasionally, and you could, I mean, there are requirements, but I think it probably makes, it can't hurt to have a condition, and maybe it's probably better for the final plans as opposed to, to the preliminary, but it can't hurt to put it in there that they should show, they should come up with a plan and pitch a plan for dust control. Because, you know, it is a long-term build out. And so it's not maybe normally something that you would look at. I mean, in, it's come up occasionally on other projects, but only individual sites, you know, that might be, you know, a big commercial building that might, about a neighborhood or something like that.
So that wouldn't be addressed in any other kind of permitting activity?
EPA and OSHA and...
Yeah.
Well, actually, it is... Can I just address that because of this?
Yeah.
And it's, you know, again, I was, I know that...
Yeah, I think it is, and it could be in addition to that, but it also is another measure saying, look, we know you're doing this build out, and there may be some of these other rules. But also, some of those other rules may be harder to enforce, because it requires an outside entity. But, and I guess I would just say, it's not, it's a quality of life issue. You're doing construction, you know, in this development. So I don't, I, I don't think, it's, I, what I imagine is the applicant's going to come forward and say, here's how we're going to manage our construction. And you're going to look at it and you're saying, great. And then that's part of the plan. So maybe there won't even need to be a condition.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. So we're making a preliminary recommendation on whether...
You're approving a preliminary subdivision.
Okay.
Based on the plans in front of you, and if you want to apply any conditions, like, I mean, I, I'm hearing that none of the waivers are on the table, so I don't think you need to ask or make a comment about those, except for the one about not providing an open space, you know, cluster plan or flag lot plan. So you might want to act on that, saying, you know, you grant the waiver for not showing that kind of plan.
And as far as the bicycle trail connection?
And I think you should make a condition that, you know, you're not approving the trail network as shown conceptually on the plan. You want to see substantial consistency with the east-west connectors and the north-south connectors.
So those are two conditions. One and third was what we just discussed about a, a construction plan to mitigate dust and so forth. And then we had comments by the DPW. It's not really a condition, but it's to make them aware or...
Right, that they, that they should address DPW comments.
And then we had some comments on the, on the cohousing. Again, this is on the loop road, but since we had some comments on the cohousing that we want them to be aware of, do we, do we bundle those together as conditions this time through, or?
Yeah, since they're not, I mean, the only thing that I would say as relative to cohousing would be that the structures on the, shown in the detention pond layout boundaries should be addressed. I think right now, they heard the comment, because the chicken coop is not part of the, I mean, except to the extent that it's in, it might affect the drainage, I think you could say, make a comment relative to that. Otherwise, that would be a site plan review issue.
We had about the, right now, the current layout of the carport interfering with the emergency 12-foot path?
Right. We can throw that in there, too, and that's a cohousing.
Right, so I'm not sure. Okay. Is anybody clear enough on, yep?
I, I don't know how I feel about it. I, I'm troubled by the concern expressed by the neighbors about the impact of a huge additional amount of traffic. On the, on the other hand, I guess anyone who bought in the earlier phase knew there was a lot of vacant land that was going to be developed. I, I guess that's what they bought into. But I, I don't, I mean, I'm just kind of thinking out loud or expressing out loud. I don't, I, I don't know whether there's any alternate layout of the loop road that would mitigate the impact of the traffic somewhat. Maybe not, because 100 cars are 100 cars. But it certainly is going to have a very substantial impact on the people who live south of this development.
I agree, but it seems like even though the, the current elevations, I don't think allow the Village Road to be, to be a straight shot for that, for the loop, because you'd lose the left side of Village Road, because it, it drops off so much. But even if that were a straight connection, I think on the Orlando Drive side, that would also, no matter what, always be a straight connection. So you might have more space in between, but you would always, I don't, I don't think it would ever make sense to, to have Orlando and, and this parcel to be offset. So people going up to that side of, of the new development and the cohousing are always going to end up coming up Orlando, I would think.
You may be right. I, I have no idea, actually. I'm just wondering whether somebody could come up with an alternate plan that might arrive at a different result. Again, everybody who bought in the earlier phase knew something, knew they were looking at more traffic in the future. I, I don't know, I'm just, I think it's a troubling issue.
Any other comments? Does anyone?
No, I just wanted to make sure I got the comment about drainage. So you said, I think I missed that.
Anybody want to give a motion, a shot?
Oh, and then I should just say, so all the, the, so this is subdivision approval. It takes a majority of the members. So it's not like a special permit, it's for, and the, and, and for subdivisions and subdivision regulations, associate members' votes are not taken. So it's just the full members that vote on a subdivision.
Can I ask, did we end up with a DPW condition?
The DPW comments in, should be addressed.
Can you tell us who are associate members?
I've got one condition for...
Dan and Alan.
So Dan and Alan.
That's why we were forced to sit over here.
All right, Devon, you want to give a shot?
All right, then we approve preliminary subdivision, Energy Positive Homes LLC, North Campus State Hospital, Ford Crossing Map, 31C.
017.
017, North Hampton. With the following conditions, that there be a construction plan that considers dust over the long term of the work, that cohousing structures adjacent to the drainage well be addressed, that there is trail connectivity, that the DPW concerns are addressed. Seems like there's one more.
Trail connectivity, north, south, and east?
East-west, north, south, east-west.
You got the buildings and the chicken coop.
Yep, in relation to the drains.
Right. And then, I think that was it.
There were...
There's one more, Mark.
There were other, the driveways need to be offset from...
Oh, sorry.
...intersecting streets by 50 feet. That was actually in the loop.
Yep.
And then the cohousing, just a heads up on the cohousing, about the emergency 12-foot drive and the carport, that they can't, one can't interfere with the other. And I think that's it. So that's a motion. Carla got in there first. Second, Carla? Any discussion? On favor? opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still need that? Still need that? Done?
Helen, do you have a question?
Thank you. Super long one? They were, actually. Thank you. Um, who wanted to...
Yeah, the zoning.
Oh, we saw that. Do you want to put that up on the screen, or do you guys have a copy of basic guidelines for standard? Do you want me to put it on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a, I have a freaking heat over here.
Thanks. Where'd you go?
Be lost.
While you're setting up, can I ask a question? I was just curious how the required space counts are calculated?
How, how we came with, to the numbers, or how do you calculate them?
How you came to the numbers? I mean, is there a national kind of standard out there?
Space, parking space, what are we?
Bicycle parking space, yeah.
So let me pull that up. There we go.
Do you think she worked all that up on her own?
It was a really cold and snowy day. No, so I'm just down a little bit, so we can get this on one page. Oops, too much. So, good question. So what happened, so this is the, oh, do you want to officially open it up?
Oh, sorry. We are opening up a schedule for 7:40, so just about an hour behind zoning ordinance amendment 350-2, 350-8.11, and 350-11.6 to define and specify bicycle parking and pedestrian access standards.
So we actually had a little bit of technical assistance from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We asked them to do research for us because we felt like, from the, certainly from your perspective, the board's perspective, not sort of going into every site plan and saying, well, we think you should add 10 more bike storage spaces to your hotel. And the applicant saying, what, where'd you come up with that number? So we figured it was time to really sort of hammer it out and put a set of standards in the zoning. So we asked PBPC to help us do some research, and there isn't a baseline standard out there. So they looked at what other communities have done, and there's definitely not, you know, a consistent standard across the board, across the country. So to some degree, yes, it's a made-up number. Just sort of thinking about uses and spaces and maybe number of bike parking spaces that makes sense. And we, but we also didn't want to make one standard for every single use, so we were trying to figure out how to weigh to group uses that would make sense. So it really was a combination of looking at what other communities have done and then sort of thinking about what might work in North Hampton and what comparable uses makes sense to put together. So that's, so the bulk of the text came from, you know, initially Pioneer Valley Planning Commission pulled together the text for us, and then we started playing with the numbers and editing it and then moving it forward in the process. So this, what this does is it defines bicycle parking and sort of delineates, differentiates between the type of storage, so short-term and long-term, which is overnight for more residential uses, or if there's a, you know, a 24-hour kind of use. And then also defines what bike racks are and what the standard is for those bike racks, and where we want those spaces. So the definition is the first part of it, and, you know, an area within one, within which one intact bicycle may be conveniently and securely stored and removed without requiring the movement of other parked bicycles, vehicles, or other objects to access the space. And spaces are short-term, designed to serve trips of up to a few hours, and shall include bike racks that are a fixed-in-place stand which allows a bicycle to lean against it in either an upright position with both wheels at a level service. I mean, all of this was detailed because of problems we've seen with people, you know, just putting in ad hoc bike racks and what doesn't work and what does work. So we wanted to clearly define that. And then a long-term space is designed to serve residents and others who require storage of bicycle overnight, which is designed to securely enclose and protect bicycles from weather, being located in a building, garage, or shed, or covered bicycle cave or locker. So that's the definitions. And then I think the change that came, so the highlighted cross out there is the change that came from Parking and Transportation. So there are a couple in here. This already went to Parking and Transportation, hasn't yet gone to Ordinance Committee. It was supposed to go this past Monday, but the snowstorm changed that, which is kind of good, because they like to be the last stop before it goes back to council. So this is actually going to go to Ordinance Committee next Wednesday. And so I don't know if you have any comments about the definition, or if you want me to go through the whole thing and then come back and review each section?
You want to go through the whole thing?
Okay, so then, so then the next piece is, when do we require bicycle parking? So it is kind of a biggie. Section A, bicycle parking shall be provided for any new building addition or enlargement of existing building, or, except for in central business district, for any change in the use of a building. So, you know, every time we look at a building permit, this is now going to trigger the requirement for adding bicycle storage. So it's not a site plan condition, it's, it's change of use. And we exempted central business because of the realities of, you know, businesses change quite frequently, and there's not always space for storage in central business.
It would seem that central business would be one of the highest-use areas of bicycles.
Right, and at the same time, there's a lot of public provision of parking, more, we hope, will be forthcoming. But, so what it does is, if you're doing a building addition, or if you're in site plan, then you would need to add it. But if you're just transitioning from an office use to a restaurant, the idea is not to require bike storage for just modification of a, inside a building as opposed to an expansion of a building. And then B, the number of bicycle parking spaces shall be calculated using the following table. What I've added since you got this was, and I'll go through this in a minute, was that if you are required, then you need to at least provide one, because some of these, if you look down, they're fractions of spaces. And the first one is residential. And what that would mean is if, you know, you're building four new units, you're four tenths of a spot, and that's not one, so you don't have to provide any. And I would think that with, you know, a place like four units, you'd want there to be some accommodation. It could be inside a garage or what have you. But that's what I added just today. So that would have to be, you know, voted on as an addition or an amendment, going through the process if you felt that was appropriate. So for residential hotel, motel, oops, bed and breakfast, one tenth of a space per dwelling unit or hotel room, and then 50% of those shall be long-term storage, so covered storage. Theaters, auditoriums, churches, takeout or sit-down restaurants, bars, nightclubs, the YMCA, library, or a YMCA, I should say, one per thousand square feet of floor area.
So just a question on, so you have a minimum of one space per category, but then you say at least 50% shall be long-term. So if you have one space, then what would?
It's got to be.
It has to be long-term.
Okay.
I mean, that's what the interpretation would be. I'm not sure if that's right. So yes, that's a good point.
Which could be somebody's garage.
It could be, yeah, and somebody's.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we covered it with the 50%.
The tenth of a, of a space would be rounded up, or no?
After, I mean, typically, we round up at the normal rounding point, which is half or more, would be one.
So a single-family house would not have any requirement?
It would have a minimum of one. That's why I added that, because a single, two, three, or four, previous to that minimum of one, would not be required to have any.
So it does, in essence, get rounded up to one, at least.
Anything below one gets rounded up to one after that?
And it has to be covered.
Now you're talking about a single family, just one single-family resident?
All homes must have a bike storage place, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what this would say.
And also backing up that, any change, I mean, if somebody had a single-family home and put a dormer on it, they'd have to add a covered parking place for a bike?
Yes.
A single-family home would seem to be problematic. I mean, what if you build a house and you don't have a car, but you'd have to build a covered storage for your bike?
And don't have a garage.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean. You'd have to build.
And are too old to ride a bike, or uninterested in riding a bike, or whatever else it might turn out to be. I don't, I'm not sure that.
I think outside residential, that's fine, but residential, that seems heavy-handed.
So do you think it's just heavy-handed for a single family, or do you think single, two, three, and four, it should also be? Because, so do you see what I'm saying? So until you get to .5 space, it doesn't trigger any.
How would three work? If you, if you were building three houses on a piece of property and you demand one bicycle rack, then that means one of those houses has to have a covered place and the other two don't? Is that how that would be?
And I promise, this is not meant to be as flippant as it's going to sound. What's the purpose of this? I mean, what, why are we, why is this?
What's the purpose for residential?
Well, yeah, I mean, what, I mean.
Well, because it, originally, I think we were thinking of multi-family. So if you had, for instance, the two housing projects that just got approved by the board, there's 72 units in there, and there's 55 units in the other one. We want, we do, we did require bike storage, but what's that number? So in the, you know, seven, for the 72-unit one, it's 7.2 spaces, which is going to be seven spaces. Three of them have to be covered. So the idea is, I mean, so that was, I think, the initial thinking behind the residential component. We weren't necessarily thinking about single-family, because that's sort of, a single or twos, because people sort of create their own space. So.
Okay, in the, in the thing we were just looking at, they had a list of parking places, and they had a list of covered parking places. Now, I don't know, but I suspect that those are not assigned to an individual person. That would be my guess with the co-housing area. If that were the case, and you had what, in essence, a semi-public, that is, for the people that are there, and then you, there has to be spaces for three bicycle racks. That almost seems more like a four coming in. But for single-family residents, it sounds like you're trying to encourage them to ride bicycles by having them have a space. I mean, it's, it's not like a restaurant or a YMCA where you're trying to encourage people to go to it on a bicycle.
I'm not so sure it works so well in the other direction.
Well, but let me, how many doorways have I walked my bicycle through? Every house has a, if it's a single-family house, has a covered bicycle storage place already.
But I don't think we should have it in the.
Okay. This came up in transportation and parking, and it was started around the idea of how many does a school need? And we didn't have any idea. And I hope, I have sent some things to Wayne. He was in that meeting, so I was not realizing you were writing these. So I sent him the.
Yeah, he said that.
Oh, good, okay. So I looked up New York and Portland, which are notorious bicycle communities that have statutes for, for planning. Cambridge had one too, and it was closed, it's the only one I found that was close to our size, and it obviously isn't our size. DC had a manual for how to calculate bicycle demand, and that was through the livable cities. What, what are we, is that what, the, the organization that gives us the seal?
Oh.
Where's your, yeah, where's your email?
You mean the star communities?
No, bicycle-friendly.
Oh, bicycle-friendly, okay.
Sent me the DC manual. So they actually had a book about how to come up with the number. And so I'm happy we're doing it, and I'm, yeah, I'm sure we don't have it all worked out for residential, but I, I never worried about the residential piece of it unless it was a rental property where the, you know, the person needed to consider it for their renters.
So then maybe you guys are okay with anything less than four or five units not having any, or not having a mandated number?
I am. I think if you get into a development where there's half a dozen, you know, duplexes and triplex, then yes. But if it's, if you have one duplex, they'll probably have it by default. But if they don't, I don't think we should make them have it.
I agree, yeah.
How do you do it, even with a larger development, like your 72 units, where they had to have, what was, seven park, bicycle storage?
Yeah.
Where, where would they be?
Well, that's part of the site plan. I mean, they'd have to figure it out on the site. So they figured it out. We already had, I mean, because site plan says you have to accommodate bicycles, and I think there's a bicycle storage line which is in there, I think it may be crossed out here as that, because this is a substitute. But it was sort of, at that point, it's, you know, they come in for tech review, and you said, you have to show us where your bike storage is. We don't know how many you should provide, but think about it and show us. And so they already, it's part, it was already part of the analysis under site plan.
So could they just show seven porches arbitrarily and say they're covered and people can put their bikes on them? And then build anything or provide?
Potentially, they could say, I mean, the porches is, I would say, they are building the porch, and they, if they can show that a bicycle can fit there, because we have the standards for how big it has to be, then they could say, you know, our, our rental agreements are going to allow people to put bicycles on their porches.
What about inside?
Yeah, anywhere. It could be wherever they want.
In the hallway, like?
Yeah.
I remember it really being an issue with the new hotel, and we wanted covered bike parking out front.
Right.
And we got our covered bike parking, but it was in back.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Right. I mean, mostly when we talked to applicants and we say, you need to meet this, you know, the board's going to want to see storage because you have to meet site plan approval criteria, like Valley and like HAP, they just designed it into their site. And it wasn't an issue. It just happened that, at the hotel, they didn't feel like they needed to do that, so they were asking the board not to have to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we took that off. So point, one space per dwelling unit, and then for, okay, so Y's, libraries, and so forth, one per thousand square feet.
So just to go back, we were saying that there was a certain number, right, four or five. I mean, if you just, if you do the rounding, you know, if it's greater than .5, so greater than five units, it would automatically round up to one normally, if you just leave it at that.
Right.
So it's, right, okay. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Did you find a reference for thousand square feet anywhere, or is that just yours?
It's been a while since we went through these numbers. I don't recall, I think we, I don't remember where it was initiated, but we played with it and said, does this make sense? So.
I'm okay with it. It's not going to create many.
The Y is 50,000 square feet or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking about how many bike racks there are in front of Forbes Library compared to how many square feet, and it would be, there are many more. But that's just, that's fine.
And then Parking and Transportation for the next one bumped up from half a space to one space per thousand square feet for commercial retail, seasonal retail, personal service.
If, if those get bumped up to one per thousand, just like the row above it, then do we need two separate rows, or should those all be bumped together?
Oh, that's a good point. Probably not.
Just for.
Yeah. So let me just make it out here.
So how big is the Y, in terms of square footage?
Maybe, I'm guessing 4,000, half thousand? The Y.
Oh, no.
It's bigger than that.
Is it?
It's big, though.
Yeah, I think, I think it's great for us to just get something on the books, is really my attitude here. We may learn a lot about it and change it.
Right.
But I just, I was surprised there weren't a lot of examples out there.
Right, I mean, as Carolyn said, up until now, we've just said, okay, thank, please Right. I mean, as Carolyn said, up until now, we've just said, "Okay, think, please think about it and get back to us."
So, the manufacturing industrial is .1 per thousand square feet. Schools, colleges, private schools, or teaching areas, five spaces per classroom?
Okay, I have a comment here. So, I think of K through 12 in college as needing a, having more of a demand for bike parking than a business, trade, or industrial school. Because I think of like a business or a trade school, the people, the students are coming probably in a car, or they're commuting from work to school, to, whereas a K through 12 in a college, your round trip is basically to that school and home. And, you know, working on a campus, I know there's never enough bike parking to satisfy college students. So, would there be opportunity to break those two out and require more, or require less from the business, trade, and industrial schools?
Is classroom the way to go in terms of college? Is that the, is classroom, I mean, K to 12, classroom seems pretty obvious, but I'm wondering about college where it's residential after all.
But, but I would, I would say, yeah, class, classroom would be the way to go, because they're still commuting from their dorm to a class.
Okay.
I mean, it seems like you could leave at five spaces per classroom, and then take those other, I agree with you, and take those other, like the trade school, industrial school, just take it out of that and-
Make it its own line.
Make it so-
It's a category, yeah.
What about an elementary school, where kids are-
It's K to 12.
For, yeah, for, I mean, younger kids aren't going to be riding their bikes. Then it's just staff. You have five parking, five bike-
Third and fourth graders ride their bike.
Yeah. There's even money for safe routes to schools, where you develop the paths and the-
Does that include daycare? How's this fit in?
Not K through 12.
Two?
So, yeah, two per classroom?
Two.
Good catch. I agree with you.
Okay. Pepper uses none. Any permanent, okay, that's pretty easy. Closest use is determined by the building commissioner. It's not difficult. So, then, this is a new line, so offices, our Office of Planning and Sustainability can authorize reduction in parking requirements when there are unique reasons why new bicycle parking is not required. So, that's a staff-level review. C, all short-term parking shall incorporate bicycle racks and the following additional specifications. See also, when it came to Bicycle Parking Guide for graphics and precedence. So, bicycle racks, so this gets into the detail of the site, the sighting and the size and area around them. Bicycle racks shall be located within 50 feet of a primary building entrance. If the primary building entrance is within 50 feet of a public right-of-way, the bicycle rack should also be located adjacent to the public streets, or sidewalks, or with city approval within the right-of-way. Bicycle racks shall allow at least two and a half feet clear horizontal distance from the central point of the bike rack in direction, in a direction perpendicular to the length of the bike, and at least three feet clear horizontal distance from the center point of the bicycle rack in each direction, parallel to the length of the bicycle, to provide adequate space to store and remove a standard bicycle.
Where did that language specifically come from?
That came from somewhere else.
Well, any, yeah, usually, the manufacturers of the bike racks, they have design specifications.
Did we follow manufacturer's recommendation, or did that just come up from?
I have to say, I, for some of these, I don't know precisely where they came from, but we did pull from standard specs for some of these things, and of course, making sure, wanting to make sure that they're spaced adequately, and people can get in and out.
My question was going too far. Spaced adequately, yes, but you don't want to end up needing a 20-foot-long bike rack for four bikes, because it's so onerous that you need five feet clear on each side, you know, or something crazy.
Yeah.
But I don't know how, if these are manufacturer's standards, or, you know, where these came from. I get the intent, and I agree with the intent, as long as it's reasonable.
Well, I can check on that, and certainly have it for ordinance committee.
I mean, you want it clear enough so you don't have to move other bikes aside to get at your bike, but you don't want it to be the width of this desk for one bike, you know, and have, between you, me, and Devin, only three bikes stored on something this long. That doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
I think two and a half feet, though, implies that you get two bikes in that slot.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, and that might be fine, I'm just wondering where this came from.
Or should we ref, is there a way to reference following manufacturers?
Right, industry standards.
And that way, we're not getting into-
Well, I mean, this is so specific, that it's, that I think it might be helpful for people who don't really know. I mean, then, we're not sending someone else to another manual to say, "Is this the right one to look at?"
Also, there might be six different manuals.
Right. The idea, I mean, obviously, is so you can get in and out. I think, I'm just trying to think of how the U-locks, I didn't measure the, you know, how we've got the standard U's out front, and what the spacing is between those. Did you, this come up at Parking and Transportation, Al?
Not at that level.
Yeah. I just wondered if there was a concern about the size. I'll have to check on that, and, you know, you guys can certainly send, if you wanted to, send a comment up to ordinance committee to say, you know, we want to make sure this-
Just make it so it's reasonable.
Yeah. Bicycle racks should be arranged either in rows or in alignment. Where bicycle racks are arranged in rows, they shall be spaced at least two and a half feet apart on center. So, that's sort of reiterating, so if you've got loops, they're going to be two and a half feet apart. But you can obviously share that space.
Yeah, it's two.
Right, right.
Where bicycle racks are arranged in alignment, they shall be spaced at least eight feet on center. When a bicycle rack is placed perpendicular to a curb, it must be located on the sidewalk with at least four feet from the curb to the nearest vertical component of the bike rack, and units placed parallel to the curb must be placed on the sidewalk with at least two feet from the curb to the bike rack. Bicycle should be at least, rack should be eight feet from a curbside or wall fire hydrant. Where 20 or more bicycle parking spaces are required, at least 5% of the required spaces must provide an additional two feet of space, parallel to the length of the bicycle, to accommodate tandem bicycles or bicycles with trailers. Bike racks shall include surfacing that is designed and maintained to be mud and dust-free. The use of rock or gravel areas is permitted, provided the edging materials, such as landscape timbers, are used so that the bicycle parking space is clearly demarcated and the rock material is contained. With the exception of residential uses, bicycle racks must be sufficiently separated from motor vehicle parking areas to protect parked bicycles. Separation must maybe accomplish through grade separation, distance, or physical barriers, such as curbs, wheel stops, poles, vegetation, or similar features. And with the exception of single and two-family uses, bike racks must be accessible by way of at least one clear lighted ADA accessible stabilized surface, five-foot-wide access route from bicycle parking to a public right-of-way that does not require carrying the bicycle and is free of any obstructions.
Is the five-foot ADA, is that where that comes from?
Bicycle racks that require a user-supplied locking device should be designed to-
I'm sorry. No, I was waiting for a verbal response to that, so I wasn't paying attention. Back to nine, the, with the exception of single and two-family uses, should that, based on our comments earlier, should that be amended to, with the exception of anything under four or five houses? So, you're saying if you had a-
She's saying, if you have to have a, if you have to have one, under residential circumstances, it has to have the following characteristics.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, right. So, I'm not sure if even this is applicable. Maybe it should be, yeah. Well, except for multi-family, you'd still want it. So, I don't think that because you're not going to hit a threshold with reinforced-
I don't think it matters.
So, it probably doesn't matter. Bicycle racks that require a user-supplied locking device shall be designed to accommodate both chain and U-shaped locking devices, and shall support the bicycle frame at two locations, not just the wheel. Bicycle racks may provide bicycle parking spaces on each side, provided that both sides meet spacing requirements set forth herein. If a rack meets the spacing requirements on one side of the stand, but not the other, as may be the case where a bicycle rack is attached to a wall, then it may provide bicycle parking spaces on that side only. The preferred design for bike racks are post-in-loop and inverted U, and Parking and Transportation ditch the wave. Other designs may be approved by the Planning Board or Office of Planning and Sustainability to allow new or innovative technologies that provide equal or greater convenience and accessibility to bicyclists when compared to facilities designed according to the Northampton Bicycle Parking Guide standards.
So, when they had the competition in East Hampton, and they've got bike racks that are, you know, shaped in guitars, or things like that, that would be fall into this?
Yeah. So, that's the bicycle storage, the rest is sidewalk.
It's a lot here just to park your bike. But, I mean, basically, it sounds like we need to start somewhere and try to bring everything together and have some sort of standard, and other than the residential issues, everything, I'm good with everything.
Yeah, I think it's a great start.
So, you need a recommendation to-
Well, there's this other section, too.
We're going to do them both same time? Okay.
Yeah, because it's all within the same ordinance.
Carolyn, if it's more than 20 bikes, I want a bike maintenance station.
You might fail to get that in site plan. So, adding to the section F that's in the site plan standards already, this is for the approval criteria under site plans, more detailed standards about, this basically takes the standards that are already in the highway business, design standards for sidewalks, and puts them, applies them to all projects that require site plan. So, most of this language was already in the zoning ordinance, but was only relevant to the HB district. So, all projects shall include sidewalks and tree belts abutting the street, except where site topography and other limitations makes it imfeasible. In such cases, where sidewalks, a sidewalk is imfeasible, the developer shall install an equal number of feet of sidewalk and/or tree belt in another area of the community as deemed by the Planning Board or Office of Planning and Sustainability. All sidewalks should meet the following standards.
Question. So, we've seen developments where you have a cul-de-sac, and it calls for sidewalks on both sides, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to have sidewalk on the inside loop, because drainage is going that way and so forth. So, the way this reads is if we don't have a sidewalk there, they have to take the lineal footage called for and put it somewhere else in the city?
Except not under that scenario, because that's under subdivision regs. So, that wouldn't apply. This would only apply if you're coming for site plan.
Okay.
So, yes, though, if, you know, we've had this come up in the industrial park on occasion. They come through the site plan, and we require sidewalks along your frontage. And some applicants, over the years, have said, "Well, the sidewalk is on the opposite side of the street, and so we've asked the applicants to continue the sidewalk that might not be in front of their property, but to continue the one that was started." So, that is comparable to what this language is saying. All internal and external sidewalks will be constructed of cement concrete. Sidewalks will be at least six feet in width in commercial zoning districts and industrial districts, and in all residential districts shall be at least five feet in width. If gratings are located in walking surfaces, then they shall have spaces no greater than half inch wide in one direction. If gratings have elongated openings, then they shall be placed so that the long dimension is perpendicular to the dominant direction of travel. Ramp?
Excuse me, we don't have any wording that says that already. It would seem that DPW regs wouldn't allow you to put wide grates, or grates that run with traffic.
They have typical sidewalk construction standards. I don't know if that's included in it, and I think we, because, but they don't have width standards. And so, I think we thought it was appropriate to pull that into the site plan section.
And these width standards are just, are specifically governed for bicycle traffic?
Well, no, this is pedestrian. So, it's, so this is site plan relative to sidewalks only.
Okay. Okay.
Ramps allowing access to the sidewalk and street by various able persons shall be required at the corner or within the curb area immediately adjacent to the sidewalk. For any new driveway, the portion of the driveway that crosses sidewalk shall conform to the sidewalk requirement set forth, regardless of whether there's sidewalk improvement extending along the balance of the front edge, with sidewalks constructed with extra depth to withstand cars. And then, cross slopes should be 1 to 50, and maintained across the entire driveway. Curb extensions may be used at any corner location or any mid-block location where there's a marked crosswalk, provided there's parking lane into which the curb may be extended. It may include transit stops. Curb extensions must be designed so as not to impede bicycle traffic. Curbs must be extended into one or both streets at a corner, and no obstructions to private use should occur in the curb extension.
Okay. Exhale. Any discussion, comments on this?
I don't think we've had a discussion on, yes, we went alone.
So, we need a recommendation for these two to move forward?
Recommendation to City Council for adoption.
Okay, I'll try and do this. Move and recommend to City Council Zoning Amendment 350-2, 350-8.11, and 350-11.6, defining and specifying bicycle parking and pedestrian access standards.
Okay, and do you want the amendments with-
Oh, as amended tonight.
Second.
Second by Devin. Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor.
Opposed? Okay. Next up, LED sign ordinance.
So, this is not yet an ordinance that's been submitted to council.
This has nothing to do with Christmas lights or anything.
So, this ordinance, I was asked to draft an ordinance to address LED signs back in December by a couple of city councilors, who had a constituent call to complain about the new high school sign that went up, and a concern about the proliferation of these signs throughout.
Just, is the, would the sign at the VA fall into this category?
No. We have no control over the federal government.
Because it lights up the sky.
But that also-
But it's that type of sign.
It's that type of sign.
Okay, so it is. Okay, that was my-
So, that's sort of the thing we don't want. You guys already initiated an ordinance for billboards and LED signs for billboards. So, that's covered. This is for on-premise display signs. And given the fact that, you know, there are a lot of changeable, hand-changeable copy signs out there, and with LED technology changing, I think it's, and you've, we've seen it already with the gas stations coming forward, with their price signing wanting to change. We don't have anything specific, though, that says you, I mean, we allow indirect or direct lit sign, and- and we've just interpreted LED signs to fall within that category. So, so far, all the signs that you've seen that have gone up have been approved, because we don't have anything that says you can't do an LED sign, and there are more energy efficiency than that. So, so the issue here is creating a sign ordinance that restricts, that specifies the brightness of the LED signs. I've also heard complaints about the Academy sign, that it's just really too bright. And so, it would restrict the time that the signs are allowed to be on, how much space is allocated for the LED component in certain cases, and then, so the curfew, the size of signage, and the type of businesses that would be allowed to have the signs. It started out, so there was, there was no, so the initial interest by the constituent was, "We need to ban all of these. We don't want any LED signs anywhere." City councilor said, "Well, that doesn't really make sense, because there are business signs that are lit now, and maybe it's better, more energy efficient to have these LED signs, and it makes it easier to change and all of that. So, let's not go all the way to that end, but let's start somewhere else." But, in particular, so the two councilors that are going to sponsor this are Councilor Adams and Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy asked that you all look at this and give feedback on the concept before it goes anywhere. So, that's why this is in front of you as sort of an other item.
I guess I go back to where you started, is in some ways that we're creating a very specific ordinance for a very specific type of sign, but we already have lots of sign ordinances.
Right, so, well, all?
I guess I'm trying, I mean, I understand there could be pluses and minuses both ways, but why doesn't it just fall under the sign ordinances we have now?
Well, because we don't have any, because the nature, well, two things. This would also address signs that may stay on all night long and businesses are closed. So, this, so, and as, and as signs transition from one technology to another, that would then come with a component, potentially, that if you all agree, and City Council agrees and it gets adopted, that there's a curfew on sign lighting. So, that's something new that we don't have. We also, the LED technology is so different from existing internally illuminated signs that we have. You know, as I was doing this research, there's a ton of research about the, the safety component of signs right on that roadway, and the flashing nature and the motion, even if it's not quick flashing. If you have, you know, web addresses and phone numbers, you've got people driving, trying to, you know, get their stuff on the phone. And so, we don't think we can regulate exactly what you can put on signs, because you're not ever allowed to regulate the content. There are some cities around the country who have said, "You can't have web addresses or phone numbers," and we don't think we can do that, because that's content. But, if there are other ways, we can address the sign thing.
Could you say that they must be stationed in?
Yes. So, the other piece of it is, so, the way, these are sort of referred to generally as dynamic display signs, meaning they can take all sorts of forms. And so, we want to define that in the sign section, but also create a standard when those signs can be changed, when the text can be changed, how often, and what they can, essentially, what they can show, text versus images. So, the first piece is just defining what these LED signs are, dynamic display signs. And then, adding a new section that would potentially say, "A dynamic display sign on or in a mobile vehicle parked in public view is not allowed, even if it's registered." Because we don't have that now. Typically, in the last building commissioner, more so, has said that if anything was a registered vehicle, we wouldn't touch it with zoning, even if there were signs all over the place. So, this sort of says, you know, there are some appropriate things, places for these. And we should treat them like signs. And then, also, this says institutional and residential uses in residential districts are, that we would change the allowances for these types of signs in residential districts, because we have churches and nursing facility, care facilities that are in residential districts, and schools. And so, that's going to have a different impact on the neighbor, surrounding neighborhood than in a commercial district. So, we want us to clearly distinguish that. So, what's proposed here is to, you know, define the dynamic display and say that, you know, there are certain uses where these are not allowed. So, membership clubs, funeral establishments can't have dynamic display signs. You know, they'll have to have, maybe they can change to LED technology, but it'll have to be internally illuminated on a sign case, but not changeable text. But churches and schools may have dynamic displays, but very specific standards. So, the display, the dynamic display can only be half of the total sign. So, if you think of the Northampton High sign, if you've seen it, there's a, you know, flat panel that just says "Northampton High School", and then there's the text, digital display. So, that the digital display isn't the entire sign.
But would that be, I mean, prohibited, what, the sign in front of that school?
Not the way this is written, except that the next bullet is minimum display time between display changes shall be 30 minutes. And the transition time to make that change has to be sort of instantaneous. Right now, they're flashing all sorts of superfluous messages every, you know, very frequently, that, you know, has an impact on the neighborhood when you have this constantly changing text. And I'm not so sure schools really need to advertise that there's a school break, and then, "By the way, there's exams next week," you know, every two seconds.
Right.
So, that sort of would address that. And that the display boards can't emit sound, and that if there are images displayed, they can only be static, they can't change. And that they must be turned off at the close of function hours or business hours. And also, there's a, that there's a dimming component, so that when the ambient light is darker, that the LED lights dim as well. So, that's the residential piece, and then also restrictions saying that, you know, in certain residential districts, again, no dynamic display signs would be allowed for bed and breakfasts, or other sort of the special uses that are in residential districts. And then, for the, and also, we allow signs for residential subdivisions, you know, entryway signs. So, thinking about that, prohibiting dynamic displays for those. And then, for the commercial side, that dynamic displays would only be allowed in, for gas stations, theaters, or public event venues. So?
How'd you pick those?
Well, because gas stations?
Are the cat out of the bag?
Well, no, not that, but their price changes happen frequently. And it's just, you know, I can't imagine in 50 years making someone get up there and change the letters out. I think it's just a function of what type of use it is, and it makes sense that they have an easy way to do that. But that they can't display all the other things for sale at the convenience store.
So, somebody like, I think North Shore Seafood has a display in the window, I think?
Yes.
That they, that they change, so that wouldn't be allowed in something like this?
Well, so, that doesn't actually, I need to check if I addressed that.
Because that's actually in the window, right?
It's in the, right.
We have an exemption for windows. So, you can have a wall sign, and you can have a sidewall sign, a frontwall sign, potentially a rearwall sign, and potentially a ground sign. And we don't, we say if it's in the glass, we, you can have almost whatever you want, as long as it doesn't take up 20% of the window area.
So, you could have a dynamic sign, LED sign, with animation and graphics and fish and all this, but if you just plop it in the window, it's okay. But if you put it outside in the grass, it's not okay.
That's a good question, maybe we need to add that. We've always, up till this point, we've always said flashing signs are not allowed, but we've left it up to the police chief to say, "Is this a distraction?" So, the police chief has come up with this ad hoc number that if it changes every 10 seconds, then it wouldn't be considered a traffic safety risk. I'm not sure that that one in particular, I don't know, I haven't looked at it in a while, but?
What was the zoning on the, we were talking about it six months ago, on the, two doors down from Faces, and it had the, in the windows?
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, what was that?
So, that was the same thing, there was this, that was because it was a distraction, so the, so the changing light was a public safety issue.
Right, but there's some, we have something in place in, for that already?
Right, but it's not, there's not a written standard. And so, it was a coordination between the building commissioner and mostly the building commissioner.
Okay.
So, let me make a note of that, actually, window signs. So, window signs, no dynamic display?
Well, I don't know if I, I don't know if I have an issue with North Shore saying, you know, "Haddock on sale," or "Half pound for this," and then it sits there for 30 minutes, and then the next, then it rotates to another, you know, swordfish?
So, maybe it's the transition time.
Yeah.
So, the way that these, in the commercial districts, the way it pitched it is minimum display time is two minutes. So, you can't transition, you know, into the next thing.
I mean, I could foresee?
Or actually, that's not, yeah.
Restaurants, you know, putting their menu up?
Right.
Or, you know, pizza shops having, whatever, sale, you know, whatever, and just plopping it in the window. But I don't know if that's a bad thing, or we should not allow that?
Well, I mean, you said that the police chief, I mean?
Well, right now, he's using a 10-second rule.
That if it's more, I mean?
If it's less than?
Than that, then it has potential to be a distraction.
Right.
That sounds too, I mean, I'm thinking about traffic, and so, you want, you want a car to be able to go by without being demanded to look away from the traffic. So, that seems a little short to me, but?
Well, that's why I came up with the two minutes for commercial districts. That's what some other jurisdictions around the country are using, that don't want service constant.
I mean, if you put an LED sign in every storefront on Main Street on both sides, and every two minutes, and they're staggered, so, you know, you can't go 100 feet without just being bombarded with. So, I don't know how you'd regulate that, or if we don't allow that, or, or just extend the?
Well, you know?
Time Square?
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, it's?
It's fun.
Yeah, people survive. There's not that many accidents in time, you know, I don't know. I feel like this is getting extreme.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, first of all, I'm handicapped in particular, because from this angle, I can't read any of that. So, I'm trying to listen to you. Yeah, I probably should have, yeah. And I'm wondering if it's all too intrusive and detailed and restrictive. I would like to have an opportunity to read it over more carefully and think about it, and look around town. I mean, I know, the one thing that you mentioned, the sign in front of the high school I drive by often, and I've never been struck, I thought that it was anything but the most benign, benign sign. I can't imagine being interested in prohibiting that modest little sign there.
I, I think the issue is, you may feel like, well, obviously, people may disagree with you, but you may think that's modest, but there's nothing in the rules that say that's the limit.
Right.
So, it could be something entirely different, because we don't have a standard for the size or, you know, how it functions. And so, I think the concern is?
It could be the Academy sign.
It could be the Academy sign, it could be?
Which everybody universally hates. How did we get it?
I don't know, yeah.
Wait, that? Because we don't have a standard.
Not totally universal, I think it's great. You know, whatever, that's just my personal opinion. But I, I think we ought to go very slowly on this, it seems very intrusive and restrictive.
I, I don't have an issue with, conceptually, having a sign that dims as it gets darker, or turns off when business is closed, or provides information that kind of hangs there for a certain period of time. I don't think, I think there should be some structure, so we don't end up with Time Square down at the, the main intersection of downtown. But if, if every storefront had an LED sign that hung there for 10 minutes, or whatever that, whatever that threshold is, and then rotated, you know, from the appetizer menu to the main course menu, or whatever it might be, I don't think that's necessarily problematic. So, I don't think we should, then I think we're getting too intrusive. But to say, if you're going to have a sign, it needs to turn off, or it needs to dim, or you can't be flipping every 20 seconds, I think that's okay.
Yeah, I'm not saying there shouldn't be any regulation, but I personally don't have any idea. I couldn't vote on this myself at all.
Because you don't feel comfortable with it?
Because I can't read it, number one. And number two, I think it's, we ought to move carefully and slowly on it, and digest, look around town with these ideas in mind, and try them out.
Is this something people want to think about more?
Well, I mean, we didn't get it.
Yeah, I mean, you're just introducing it, right? I mean, we're not?
Right, I'm not asking you to vote, I, I'm asking you more sort of to get your feedback. This hasn't been formally introduced at all, it's sort of the first cut. This is the first viewing of any text that has been put out there based on the request that came to me to work on this. And, and frankly, you know, the city councilor said, you know, "I'd like to hear what the planning board has to say about something like this." So, if there's no, there's nothing pushing you to say you have to make a decision tonight, you can read through, you know, what I said, and?
Did you send this to us? Maybe I'm not getting my email.
Yeah, it was an attachment. Does the LED light have level of intensities?
Yes.
That would make an awful difference.
Yeah, it's, and, you know, when I looked, there are some communities that regulate it, and there's a different standards. There are different standards used for LED lights than there are that we use for sight lights, because you're looking at what's coming from the sign, as opposed to what's, you know, shining down onto the sight. So, Louis and I had a conversation about whether we should include this new standard, and the typical standard is based on mitts, which is, which has a, you know, you can figure out the foot candles, you know, based on that. He felt like there, probably, we could start with just having the current lighting standards apply, so you can't have more than a maximum of, you know, three to five-foot candles from any one site. And that maybe the better thing to start out was keep it that way, don't introduce a new, you know, light standard. But have, make sure that it does dim at night, that there's that differential and a photocell sensor. Most of the technology has, I mean, that's standard. But I'm not sure that it's here at the Academy, or that they have it turned on, or whatever. It doesn't seem like it dims at all.
Right, at all, yeah.
So, making sure that that gets to be incorporated into that piece of it. But, you know, there are a lot of things, you know, that, you know, looking at what some of the other communities have done, and what the sign technology is out there, it's a little bit daunting, because it's changing so quickly. There are these moving video images that go on roving trucks, and, you know, that's a clear safety hazard, I think. But also, on, on signs, and, I mean, like the VA has that, so?
Well, if they're one bright, is there, is there a night sky component to this? Because the one at the VA is bright enough that it is, it needs to be shielding.
Right.
So, I don't, I don't see that in this anywhere.
Right, so the idea was, if it meets, that, we didn't put a shielding component, you know, if there's a calf at the top, a lot of these boxes don't have, you know, they're just sort of flush. I didn't frankly think about that, because we have the light standard, and if we're putting a curfew on this, so to speak, then it's not going to be, you know, for the most part, that'll be turned off.
As the, as it gets darker, the light's supposed to dim with? It says it has to dim as the, as it gets darker, the light's supposed to dim with darkness.
And, and if, if the curfew is instituted, then we're assured that it won't be, for, for businesses that close, that it won't be on all night.
I, I think, I'm okay initially with no dynamic signs. It needs to dim as it gets darker. It needs to turn off when business is closed. But I, I think it warrants more review, more discussion before we jump in with a recommendation or not.
If we, if we established a standard, couldn't we nicely write a letter to the VA and tell them what our standard is, and suggest maybe it would be nice if their light was less intrusive? I mean, is that, that something we could do, once we had established our own standard?
Sure.
Well, it's not like, that's a pretty new sign. So, I think it would have the capability to dim at night.
Yeah.
Again, maybe I need new glasses, but I live in Leeds, drive by the VA every day, and the sign never struck me as inappropriate, or obtrusive, or too bright. Not, never once. I guess I need better glasses.
Well, I, I mean, I'm the same. I live right up the street from them. But at night, I, I mean, it's really bright. And then they have another one, just like a hundred yards up their road. They have, they have another one, actually, that is...
The interior wing?
Yeah, where the, where it goes up, and it starts, there's another one right there that has, you know...
You can't see that from the road, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was by, last night, I think, "What is that up there?"
Looking straight ahead, I guess. That's my problem.
Well, and it seemed, and I'm kind of like with Mark. I mean, I think, yes, as technology's going to keep changing, putting some basic parameters around. And I think, maybe in some ways, almost thinking of it more as lights as opposed to signs. Maybe that, maybe that's why, maybe that's how, because that's the issue, you know, are they safe? Are they, and, you know, the chief is, you know, has got, you know, that's probably not a bad rule of thumb. If it's not changing more than every ten seconds, then, okay, it's at least not creating a distraction, I don't know. Depending on what's on. But, yeah, yeah, maybe that's, you know, I was almost thinking of it as a light as opposed to a sign.
And public safety and, and the light, yeah, should be the two big things.
Right.
I think that's what, I mean, I think that's what people have with the, what I've heard people say about, like, the one at the academy, it's just so, it's so bright, it's distracting.
Right.
You're coming down in a very busy intersection, and all of a sudden, there's just this big light.
It's not the information, or the size of the font, or whatever. It's just, it's so bright.
Right, and you're, you know, it's a very busy area and everything. I think that's the thing, you know, that people, at least, you know, I would people say.
Do they have to get central business architecture approval?
Well, yeah, that's true.
That's the piece that bothers me about it. It's not the...
It just appeared, and never, and never, oh, where'd that come from?
I think the other, the other piece about, so, I hear that, that sounds like good guidance. I think the other piece is also the residential piece. It's not just safety, but its impact to neighbors, neighborhoods, or the institutional uses that are sort of buried deep in neighborhoods.
Which goes back to light pollution.
Right, yeah, that's what I see, yeah, the light pollution part, yeah. If you can see a flashing or something, you can't really see it, it's there, and you're, you know, it's coming in your window or something.
Okay.
Okay. So, we...
So, do you want to, do you want, um, do you want to take some more time to review this, and we'll put it on another agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, so I won't mess with any language, and just...
Okay, so, I mean, if you heard anything that you think would improve it, I...
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll look at this next month.
Because I didn't go look at the lighting. I mean, that's, you know, to what John is talking about. I didn't think about what else could dovetail with it.
Okay.
Send it to me again, please. Maybe I've gotten it, but I didn't.
Send it, I just sent it to you. Do you have, do you have email on your phone?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, this is way...
You are, you are on the original unless your email...
Uh, we have one last item to review, the minutes of January eighth.
Move we approve the minutes of January eighth?
Second.
No corrections, Devon?
I gave them to her.
Yeah, a couple of capital letters.
Too much on my phone to get to my email.
No.
Oh, I don't know.
I slipped you another...
Oh, is this one here?
This one, no, it's here.
Oh. As amended by Devon?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, let me just get out of here so I can...
Yeah, there were some capital letters that were...
"Street" was one, or something?
I don't know, there were a couple of them, but...
Motion by Devon, second of that. John, any discussion? All in favor? Alan abstains. No, he's good.
Looking at my email.
Uh, okay, I need one more motion.
Oh, wait.
Hold on, hold on. Couple more?
Yes, I have an A and R. Uh, it'd be quick.
That sounds rude.
Is that too much information? This is one of those, we need to approve something.
Yeah, why, why are we talking about this hour?
Right, exactly. So, this is just essentially a land swap. A property owner owns two abutting parcels, and they want to carve off one piece in the back, not along the frontage, and shift it to the other piece so that they have more. So, there's no frontage change. They're keeping the same lot size. It's right up after you pass Florence Fields, going up the hill on the west side. And not creating any new lots, just a little swap of land.
Where is it?
Spring Street, across from Florence Fields, up the way a little bit.
If they're not changing lots, what's their purpose?
They own a rental property, and they have their house where they live, and they want to allocate more land from the rental property to the house where they live.
Okay.
Anybody have an issue with that? Okay, so you need a motion on this?
Yes, for you to allow it to be endorsed.
A move we approve for the planning office to do an A and R on Spring Street.
Second? Discussion, all in favor, opposed, all abstains?
I'll vote for it, whatever it was.
Uh, okay, that's approved now. Another motion.